Do stands, say pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the remembrance for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Haney, grab roll call, please.
Sure.
Beer stud?
Here.
Bjork?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
Downey?
Here.
Morissette?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Odine?
Here.
Okay, next our approval of minutes from the August twenty-seventh meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, next we have approval of bills with, I believe, Mr. Morissette tonight?
Yep. Uh, Mayor and Council, I make a motion, we approve the bills in the amount of three million, five hundred seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred two dollars and eighty-five cents, subject to the Comptroller's review.
Second.
Uh, questions, comments on the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to stand up and talk, now would be your time. Uh, like you remind them, put your name and number and everything on the list. So, two ma- and two minutes, like always.
Good evening. It's difficult to come before the council and speak about community concerns, especially for those who are not comfortable with public speaking. It's even more difficult knowing that there will be no positive response of any kind from the council itself, though the administrator or a council member may use the opportunity to berate a speaker or claim they are being dishonest. There's never civil dialogue or follow-up questions from the council on issues raised by the public during this rare opportunity for community members to raise issues of concern. In the past months, I've noticed more and more of your constituents asking for greater transparency from you and the city administrator. Community members come before the council because they are blocked from appearing on the agenda by the city administrator and are allotted two minutes to present their concerns. For the most part, those concerns appear to be ignored. And instead of greater transparency, the city administrator has implemented a policy of less and less transparency and enforced it on staff with threats of job loss. I again offer proof of my claims to the council, but this time I offer proof from city staff members on the condition that any staff who engage in whistleblowing will be protected from retaliation. Are you willing to pri- provide that assurance?
Is there anybody else in the audience that has anything they'd like to say? Kalana?
Hi, I'm Erica Ellipsen, Public Works Manager here for the City of River Falls. And I just wanted to come and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, um, for the purchase of the plow truck back in April. At our August eighth community appreciation event, we asked the public to help pick names, and we had over a hundred submitted. Of the hundred submitted, we picked Snow Force One. So, Snow Force One will be the new plow truck on the west side of town on Plow Truck Two. Uh, so any of the public that might be here, make sure that you make a wave. Uh, Todd Lubick is the one that's going to be driving that. And unfortunately, the person who submitted that name, uh, didn't give credit to themselves, so it's an anonymous submission. But we are very excited to share the name with the public and that it was picked at the community appreciation event. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, Erica. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. Oh, sorry.
I would, um, like to just, um, pass on our, my condolences or our condolences from the City of River Falls and the council and mayor that, um, the passing of Francis Ogden, who was, um, a city engineer for City of River Falls back s- almost sixty years ago. So Fran- or Frank, as everybody knew him, was almost, um, eighty-seven years old and, um, was a great man. And if you look out at, right out the window there, you'll see Maple Street Bridge, that he was a big part of, um, engineering and other developments in neighborhoods around the town. So, uh, Mr. Ogden was an important part to our growth of our city, and he'll be missed.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance twenty-two-four dash zero-five. This is an ordinance creating section nine point two-four point zero-seven-zero residential picketing regulations, and this is the first reading. Is there anybody in the audience that has anything they'd like to say about this?
The way that ordinances are presented in these meetings is not understandable to the general public. In order to be more transparent, it would be really good to explain what these ordinances are changing or creating. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that has anything they'd like to say? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open up a council hearing. If the council's got any questions.
Um, so I read through this, uh, ordinance, and I, I have a couple of questions. We, like, six months ago, maybe less than a year ago, had an ordinance brought in front of us that was very narrow ris- uh, regarding picketing in front of council members and law enforcement officers' homes. And we, as a council, chose to vote that down. Now we have an ordinance coming for that is much broader than that ordinance. So I'm just confused as to why this is coming before us, because I've heard nothing about this.
We've had council members and me asked to bring it back.
Okay, do we ha- are we responding to an actual incident of picketing in residential areas? Or are we trying to... Are we taking away something from people that are... Are we trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist? Because I've never had seen residential picketing in the almost eight years I've lived here.
No, I don't think we're doing it because we've had a problem with it. I think we're doing it because everybody sees how things are going around the nation, and we want to make sure we can, not just council members, but please, firemen, uh, school, school board members, uh, anybody involved in any kind of public office or anything, any kind of public jobs, is safe to be in their own home and not have to deal with stuff like this.
Are we concerned that the current laws that exist regarding trespassing, um, things like that? Do we, are we concerned that our police officers won't enforce those laws if we don't have this ordinance on the books?
They'll enforce those laws.
So to me, it feels like we're taking away a fundamental right of our citizens to express their frustration through free speech, demon- public demonstration on public property, including the sidewalks, for something that's never happened.
May I? Um, I, I also reviewed this, and I realize it's a little broader than the one that came before us, but, um, I've got a background as a lawyer, so I'll, I'll just speak to that a little bit. Um, when you're dealing with constitutional rights here, the constitutional right for free speech, you can put reasonable restrictions on it. Um, that's been the law for decades, maybe a century. Um, uh, and, uh, it also needs to be balanced against other rights, including the right to be safe in your own home, the right of privacy in your neighborhood. And I don't see this as, um, I agree with the mayor about, um, you know, there, there may or may not be potential threats in, in the future. I've, you know, I've read reports of people being doxxed and harassed, and I don't want that happening here. Um, there are plenty of public forums and other ways for people to express their free speech rights. Um, uh, and, uh, trespassing only goes so far, um, because people could stand in the street. That's a public, you're right, that's a public space. Um, but I see this as a reasonable, um, a reasonable limitation, um, that, you know, m- may help protect a school board member, a police officer, who has been involved in something controversial, in doing their job.
And so, do we have very clear, for the public, outlined areas where they, if this were to pass, would be legally permitted to picket? Because I would say ninety-five percent of River Falls is residential. And that you could make the argument that a hundred percent of River Falls is residential because people live downtown. Like, I will defer to our council.
Yeah, I would.
Right, so this is in regard to targeted residential picketing? So you could walk through a residential neighborhood and protest in the street. What you can't do is stand in front of someone's house for hours and days on ends in the street, chanting and picketing.
But that would be... This is a subjective call as to what, I mean, how long is too long? For some people, a day is too long, for some people, ten minutes is too long.
Probably even, you know, fifteen minutes, you could probably be cited under this ordinance.
So you have, yeah, fifteen minutes is...
And the idea is you can communicate with elected officials, and you can do protests, but you can't just stop in front of someone's house and target that person. And that is constitutional, because it's a reasonable restriction on free speech, free speech rights, because you have to balance that against privacy interests as well.
So have we, we have not outlined that for the public in the ordinance? It's not outlined, so therefore, people will just not express their free speech rights? I, I, I mean, if you want to do this, it should be as narrow as humanly possible.
I guess I don't quite understand what would prevent someone from exercising generally their free speech rights. They simply can't do so targeting an individual person at their private residence.
I g-.
Ultimately, it's a policy decision for the council.
Correct. So, I, I would say this is... This is so broad that it's not reasonable, because it would impinge all rights, because this is extraordinarily subjective.
I disagree. This is not so broad. This is targeted picketing in front of a person's home? That's very specific. It's not like they can't picket, say they want to picket a home. It's not like they can't come to, um, city council and tell me what they think. It's not like they can't write to me. It's not like they can't picket outside of city hall or put a banner on Main Street. Um, they just can't be in my neighborhood and target my house. That's, that's, that's not unlimited. Uh, that, that's, that is an, uh, a reasonable limitation, in my view.
It, it has just never happened. I mean, I, we're, we're...
Not here.
Not here and not most communities. I mean, I would say that the vast majority of places that this happens, if it happens at all, are large cities. So we're, this isn't a c- I, I feel like we're doing this in, in a way be- over fear that doesn't... It's fear mongering. I mean, there is no reason... We are not responding to an actual incident. When we took people's right away to leave signs in, to put signs in right-of-way and in public spaces, that was because there were too many people not playing by the rules. Nothing like this has happened. It doesn't happen in most communities. I, I just really feel that this is something, this is a bad choice for this council. It is something that will be looked at. I, yeah, that, I'm, it's, I think this is a bad decision.
So I have a friendly question for, for Councilman Mueller. So, what is something that you see down the road that could happen that you think that this ordinance maybe becomes a gateway towards? Because I feel like you're, 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 and I'm sympathetic to your argument and, and respectful of that argument. It seems to me that you are articulating that something in the future will be less optimal than it is. What are some things that you think that could be?
Well, I, I think, I understand that we're saying the word targeted, and I get that. And I understand that that is no fun and would not be ideal. Nobody would like that. But what I think this does is, you, one, we have nothing outlined in the statute, in the ordinance, that explains what residential is. So therefore, we could then say, because people live above places in Main Street, the entire city is residential, and therefore, no one can do picketing. And if, say, for example, you're on the street and you're walking up and down Main Street, and you're on the same block because you're just, that's what you're doing, somebody there could feel targeted, and those people could be arrested. Secondly, it leaves it to be very subjective as to what targeting is. Is it, again, like Chris said, fifteen mi- I'm sorry, Attorney Gerhart, said, it could be less than fifteen minutes? And I, I just feel like we have so many rights in this country that are being curtailed out of fear for things that don't exist. And so, I don't want this community to be a place where we start doing that and responding to concerns that have not happened. And I understand that there are certain things that absolutely should be proactive, but limiting people's ability to speak their mind is not one I think that we should be doing. So, I don't know if that really answers your question, Nick, but...
N- no, I appreciate it, and I guess I have a follow-up then for the attorney, which is, so, uh, you all know where I live, and you can look it up if, if you don't. Um, and you come and you, uh, picket right at the edge of my driveway. Do we consider, do we have current laws in the books for trespassing? At what point is you being right on the edge of my street and driveway trespassing versus targeted picketing? Because it seems we need definitions in place to bring antithesis. Because at this point, I've had some conversations and understand why we're here today. I, I don't like that it doesn't have a little bit more specificity towards it.
Right, so trespassing is if someone's actually on your property. The driveway that's in the right-of-way is not your property. Right, that's city right-of-way. So if someone could stand in your driveway without this ordinance and picket you, and they would not be trespassing. The ordinance does have pretty specific definitions. It's targeted residential picketing is an activity, including but not limited to marching, standing, patrolling, that is focused on a single residential dwelling without the consent of the dwelling's occupant. So it wouldn't apply if someone's just marching through a neighborhood or through a residential neighborhood, because it's not targeted at a single residential dwelling. Well, the picketing has to be targeted at, you know, council member Carol's house, because we don't like council member Carol or her actions, not going through the neighborhood.
Well, so that's my next question, and I appreciate that definition. So, is there a, a belief that you would have that this could, okay, let's say that everyone in this room changes in the next ten years. So we have a different chief of police, we have a different city administrator, maybe we have a different, different lawyer. Could this be viewed differently and more expansive than is currently written, just because there's different people in different seats?
I don't believe so. It says single residential dwelling.
Okay.
That's pretty clear. And the other thing to remember, too, is anytime the council make up changes, they can always change ordinances, too. So, the ordinance is only as permanent as a council member wa- you know, council wants it to be. And adopting or not adopting this ordinance is a complete policy decision for this council to make.
No, thank you. I guess I have one last one, just, just to put you on the spot, uh, because we're making you do that today. So, so Alyssa had a good point, that there is, uh, residential units right down the road here. So, would picking in front of city hall in any way, shape, or form apply to targeted residential picking from what you can see?
Not at all.
Okay. I think part of this, what wasn't answered, though, is Alyssa had asked questions regarding our Main Street. A lot of cities let people get permits. I didn't see any alternatives offered yet. Maybe there could be, but I didn't see any alternatives offered yet where you could have, like, a protest down Main Street. Those are individual dwelling units. From my understanding, the people might be renting and living above Main Street. So I think maybe, is it possible? Um, and I know maybe it's not as targeted, but maybe it is. But what is the definition? Is it well-understood? Is it well-written? I don't necessarily see all these different nuances when I looked at this. I do can, I do understand why, um, you know, there might be a definition, like, or essentially definition, but why a, um, a city might recommend something differently than it has in the past, though, uh, with stuff we see going on politically. So it, it's, it's reasonable that people would want an ordinance like this. I guess for me, I think, what, what was the difference between the one about six months ago? You know, did the city change its position between recommending that? And then rec- or, and, you know, where they didn't recommend it? Were this one they actually do recommend? That's kind of my question for, um, Administrator Simpson, if you could answer that. Because it is different if you look at, um, what we're looking at from then and what we're looking at now, from my understanding.
Yeah, I think there's slight differences in what it is, but it, I mean, it's, this goes to a larger... This provides a larger privacy for all people living in the City of River Falls. So, even though it, I think, well, what you're supposing is happening or what's happened in other communities is targeting of officials, for lack of a better term, this would provide all people who live in River Falls the right to privacy in their own dwelling. So, could you... Privacy only in the sense of targeted residential picketing. There's all kinds of other things that invade your privacy that are not covered by this ordinance. Um, and so, i- and this, that's what you're being asked away, and it's a policy. Um, we could change the memo if, if it be clearer that this is a policy decision for the council. If you want to pass this type of policy, we recommend you use this language.
Why not, um, take some of the discussion we've all had, so there's more nuance to it, and put it into code enforcement, so it's a little bit more flashed out, where maybe it's a little bit more specified, so people can understand the rules better? Because if, if it's in code enforcement, then it is a little bit more personally curtailed. Maybe people should be able to picket their elected official, where they shouldn't be allowed to picket, say, other residents or city staff, for ma- for example.
Yeah, I think, I don't know for sure, but I d- I think you'd have a hard time focusing only on certain officials and applying that protection to them and not broader, so that's...
I think you said that in reverse.
That's why we think this is better, because the broader, it provides protection to anyone in their residential unit.
Correct, because I understand that the reason for the revision was to have broad applicability for all residents, not just council elected officials, which was the ordinance that was before council, I know it was a year ago or so.
Recall, those, there was two ordinances that proposed. One was for election officials, um, regarding, it wasn't residential picketing, it was...
Disorderly conduct, harass.
Election, uh, election officials. And then there was this, an ordinance like this that was for other officials, targeted residential picketing. The feedback that we heard from council was that, I'm paraphrasing, um, that this wasn't an issue of concern to you as council members, and it didn't, you, when weighing the pros and cons of the ordinance and the privacy versus the speech, you, you didn't think it was ready at that time. Since then, the mayor has talked to me about bringing this back, and so we brought it back in a format that's broader for, um, y- you're weighing rights, so there's, you do have some right to privacy also, or some expected right to privacy, and this is emphasizing that you have a particular right to privacy in your own residential dwelling. But, you know, all of our ordinances require judgment by the people that are enforcing them, law enforcement, and then they have checks and balances on them, uh, with supervisors of law enforcement, and they have checks and balances on them with the law, the court system. That, so this is, specificity is up to the council. We can provide more specificity if there's something lacking that you want to do, because it's a policy decision for you. You can take out the words, um, including but not limited to, and just say, including to. Mark, you can list marching, standing, patrolling, that's focused. So that, we're suggesting, the city attorney has reviewed the case law and is suggesting this language based on what the Supreme Court has suggested is constitutional.
And ju- just so everyone understands, the ordinance in the Frisbee B. Schultz case was even broader. It just said targeted residential, residential picketing is prohibited without any definition. So it's ultimately up to some officer discretion on enforcement, and then when it comes to issuing citations, up to the court to decide, you know, if the city needs this burden of proof in prosecuting, the issuance of a citation.
Okay, so, question. Could people still protest on Main Street if they got a permit or something? Is it...
We don't require permits for protesting in River Falls.
So you're saying that people can shut down the Main Street?
There's cities that essentially draw circles, lines, and other significant restrictions on speech, and then require you to have a permit to exercise it. We don't, I'm not aware of any...
I'm not either.
Our ordinance is requires permits. So if you were doing that, you'd essentially be deciding that you want to add more restriction to, to speech.
To, oh, go ahead, Dan.
Oh, um, yeah, this is kind of apropos of nothing, and I just want to follow up on something, um, earlier. This is not a criminal statute. This is, this, um, subjects, uh, people who violate it to a fine. So it's, no, no one's going to be arrested over this.
Well, I think, okay, so, as I'm hearing this, one of the things that really concerns me is the way we're going to find out how far people can go is putting people into the court system. You have to pay a fine to somebody. I don't know if it's the clerk or somebody, but they're going to then have interactions while they are protesting something with police, who will then fine them, and then they will be put into whatever system we use here to, to deal with that. And in order to figure out if we've gone too far with this law that I don't believe our citizens are asking for, um, or neighborhood associations are asking for, we are going to find out after the fact, when we have had people put into very unpleasant situations with our law enforcement officers, who should not have to be doing this work of figuring out how long is too long for somebody to be exercising their First Amendment right before we decide that we have violated the ordinance. I just, I, I, it, it puts people in a really awful position who are trying to express their concerns about things that elected officials have done, or whatever. So I...
So my, my whole reason for bringing this back, I mean, my mindset was I wanted it broader, because I don't, because council members are okay. They're not worried about people coming to our houses and this. This look like Scott expressed, this covers every single citizen in River Falls. I think people have gone too far. You know, you're worried about people getting drug into the court system and going too far. I think they've already gone too far if they're standing in front of somebody's house on the street and picketing that individual person. That's going too far. What we're doing is making sure that person in that house feels safe. There's a thousand places in town, there's a thousand meeting places, there's thousands peaceful people can cry, complain, bitch and moan about somebody without having to stand in front of their house and doing it.
But it's never...
We're not, we're not treading on anybody's rights. We're not taking away anything from anybody. I think if they get to the point where they're doing that, the police have to get involved. The police should be involved, because that person has gone too far. That was my thought.
It, it hasn't ha- we're...
It hasn't, but we see how it's getting worse and worse across the country.
It's n- it's not, that is...
Well, that's, that's an opinion thing. I mean, I, I think it is, some people don't think it is.
I think it...
I just, I just want to make sure everybody feels comfortable, especially now. I mean, you have the wrong sign in your front yard. You have people come ripping it out of the yard, there's spray painting stuff in your yard. It's just, I, I don't want that going on. And maybe the, and maybe that'll never happen, that's great. But this is, I'm looking at this as a preventative measure.
So I have a question. Could some of this preventative ma- measure our mayor's talking about be better, say, in just code enforcement? So it has a little bit more, this is a protocol to follow, so it gives people a bit of more warning? So we could probably, you know, maybe do some of that, but, you know, so people kind of understand, like, hey, you are, but, you know, in violation of the code.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand.
It's possible that we, it's possible that there's details that, you know, I don't, that maybe are missing from this discussion, that we find out later, is what I'm saying. And if it was in code enforcement, we could discover that and improve that code over time, where if we do it this way, it might not be allowed to adopt and bring in details that would actually make it something we could all agree on up here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how to react exactly to that, because I'm not sure what the, the aim is. I- is it because you don't want police officers doing the enforcement or...
No, in code enforcement, a lot of, a lot of good practice is giving people a warning first. You don't have to slap people with a ticket. You just say, hey, you guys are in violation of this, we're going to give you a warning, move on. You know, move your protest. It's kind of like the whole, how do you determine what time, who's the timekeeper? When people get told to move on by a police officer and they don't, that's a little bit different, isn't it? But if you had a well-defined code that would explain each of those steps were, I think it'd be bit easier for the average citizen to understand it.
But effectively, we're proactively communicating to citizens where they can and can't protest. That's what we're effectively doing. We're saying, not in residential areas, not where neighbors are affected that are not who the target of your protest is. Not in residential areas, but you can protest in the plaza at city hall, at Veterans Park, uh, walking up and down Main Street. You can protest in public spaces. We're proactively telling them... Uh, walking up and down Main Street, you can protest in public spaces, we're proactively telling them that. This is not intended to cover. Us so much as it is. School board members, committee members of uh that serve for the city. Coaches. Pole workers, police officers, fire, EMS, I, I think this covers everybody and protects that right. And I respectfully disagree with, with your position. I think this is a proactive approach to telling people. Where they can and can't protest.
Chris, can I ask um? It's targeted, so if somebody wanted to have a protest, they could walk down a public street through all residential areas. As long as they don't stop in front of Joe's house and for fifteen minutes or so, but.
Right, and target Joe, because they don't like what Joe is doing. Can still walk through a residential street or residential neighborhood, that's perfectly acceptable.
Yeah.
Because it's not targeted.
Right.
One thing that I think should be brought up is, you know, again, the policy decision for the council. If you don't have an ordinance like this, what you're waiting for is for something to get to a level where it would require criminal enforcement. For harassment. Or disorderly conduct. In which case the person could be arrested, because they'd be violating a criminal statute. This is a city ordinance, it only provides for a civil forfeiture. So it's essentially another tool. The bag of tools that law enforcement has. To, you know. If this is what the council wants to say. We've got an ordinance, you know, we can't do this, could be subject to a forfeiture. Please, you know, here's why you can't do it. Without it, you're pretty much left to waiting until the point it gets to a criminal offense.
And again, the key is targeted, so.
Correct.
Go and protest all you want and. And, you know, say your piece, but don't stop at Joe's house and, and have your party and your protests there.
Correct.
I do admire the proactive aspect of what we're discussing, I, I appreciate that. I guess for me, um, my question is, Mr. Simpson. When it comes to um implementation, would it, when I talk about code enforcement. Is there any advantage between taking some of this and putting it into code enforcement, in other words, would it be more understanding when people um? Are in what we might call a gray area? Or would it be better off where it could also, or could it be more editable, or where you guy at the city figures out maybe there's some details that missed? In the form it already has? Which one would be the more um better way to actually have something that would be responsible to the future as much as it would be today?
Yeah, I'm not sure I can answer that question, I think you had, the council has to answer that question for themselves about. If, if you implement this ordinance and we have that activity, appropriate activity. I am confident that our law enforcement. Has good judgment and would be able to use this as a tool to de-escalate situation.
So you're saying it would work pretty much either way?
I, I'm not saying that, I, I think my preference would be to have. The consistency of the trained law enforcement officer. Making those decisions rather than doing it through code enforcement, which tends to deal with. Less constitutional, less sticky, and less um charged environments, although they have their own charged environments and controversies and constitutional issues, but. Police officers are sworn. And are trained in constitutional law, they understand what they're doing, they certainly have de-escalation techniques, and obviously, if somebody chooses to do this, if, if you choose to pass the ordinance. If somebody chooses to do the activity, law enforcement's first reaction is not to write a citation. I, I, that's not what, how law enforcement works. Um, is. We don't make money off of citations, it's, it's not a winner for us from a. Budget or finance point, they're gonna de-escalate the situation by likely. Confronting the person, informing of them of the ordinance and asking them to comply with the ordinance, in which case most people. Comply with the ordinance with the new information they have from law enforcement, and if they don't. Then the law enforcement would determine what the next step would be.
So you're suggesting that this is more defined than, say, code enforcement, and it would be more flexible and understanding to the citizens?
I, I, I'm not sure. The need for broad understanding by the broad citizenry, because the broad citizenry are not. Going to participate in targeted residential picketing. The people that you would likely want to understand the ordinance are people that. Use this as a strategy.
Okay.
And that's a small group of people in the US right now.
Anybody else have anything? I just want to say that um. Council member Mueller, you're absolutely right that the first amendment rights are, are um to be zealously guarded and protected, um, and there are. Many ways for people to communicate with us here in the council. Um, they can telephone us, our, our phone numbers are listed in the webpage, they, so are our emails. They can come and make comments here, they can write us letters, um, they can meet us for coffee and, and talk with us, all those, all those things, they can um. They also have uh plenty of opportunities to um, you know, publicly protest or support. You know, protest in whatever form they, they wish. So, uh, yeah. That being said, I think, you know, sometimes you can put reasonable restrictions, and if. This is never used, great.
I have a couple more questions, Mr. Mayor, if I can. So I think if my count's right, we have roughly six hundred and one municipalities and villages in the state. Do we know how many of those six hundred and one currently have, and I'm gonna say Brookfield, because it's cited in the case law, do we know how many we currently have something like this on the books?
I have done a survey of every municipality, I don't think that information is readily available, you'd have to go. City by city or reach out to the league and see if uh. They have a list, but I don't have that.
At the minimum, I think we should know what the league would say, because they think we do that for everything else, we look at best practices and understanding that. That in, in the opinion of our lawyer, right, that this is constitutional, we're viewing this as a constitutional uh ordinance, right, we're not creating something that's not. But we should still just have a sense of what, where this is going in terms of broader contours. Um, so within that framework, and, and that's okay, I'll just leave that as a statement. The problem with being in the middle is you often get run over by both sides. So I have a frustration here, because we have all sorts of other things that could have ordinances that don't. Food trucks do not have ordinances right now, we could. We've talked about it, we've discussed it, but for right now, we've decided we're not going to. So as a council, I think a default action has been, if we don't see an issue, we're not gonna go ahead and put something on the books quite yet. That being said, I think everyone here on, on the council side, and probably everyone that's watching this or in this building. Believes in free, fair elections. And how crucial that is to a thriving democracy. Simultaneously, what this ordinance I think does is it helps protect our election officials. And that's a really important element in an era of contested elections and, and uh not. Not reliably believing that facts are facts, right, and results are results, so I do like this because I think it has the ability. To, to protect the people who maybe need protection the most, because I'm not certainly one of those people, but I do think our election officials really need that. And any recent history sees that we're held on by hair in a couple of states in terms of people choosing to do the right thing versus maybe the politically expedient easy thing. Um, so the, I think the last frustration I want to voice. Is that. I'm surprised that with all the other statutes and things we have on the books, that basically this is not already covered, that's always a question we have, is this, is this? Is this extra, is this added, or I think what, what Councilor Downing was trying to get to was, we already have other ordinances, but, but I'm hearing you say, we don't, and that's why it's needed. So I guess I'll just state for myself in the sense that we've had this discussion, it's been a very good discussion, it's been thoughtful, it's been respectful. I'm a very slight barely yes, uh, because I don't think we want to curtail constitutional liberties, but I don't think we're doing that, and um. If we have a reason to be a no in the future, I'll, I'll be first up here talking about why we need to do that.
And I, I guess for me, I'd like to see if we can get more, if I can get some more details from the city until between now and the next meeting, so.
Okay, next we will move on to ordinance resolution. Uh, it's resolution requesting an update to the open container exemption for Bacon Bash. And I will take a motion on this.
Uh, I'm so moved.
Second.
Okay, first and second, questions, comments?
Chief Young, are, are we providing? Are we providing um reserve officers to monitor the open container?
We are, and officers too.
And regular, okay, thank you, that was my only question.
So if I read this right, we're looking at having this on Sunday now as well. All the way from Pine Street, all the way up to Cascade, open container, you can go up and down Main Street? I mean, that's the way it's reading. That's a. That's a big um.
Well, I thought it was just the one.
No, it is down to Pine, isn't it?
Yeah, Pine to Cascade, it says. So I, I, I mean, I could see from Maple to Locust, but we're talking, and I know Russ is here, so he can answer. Part of what the reasons are for that, but. Wow, that seems like a big area to try to control now that, I guess maybe one of the. S- saving graces is both Vikings and um Packers are playing that afternoon, so. But.
Could, could we, Mayor, would you allow the Chamber?
Yep.
Chamber Act to come up?
So Russ, you're looking at extending it from Pine to Cascade?
So the. The description we provided you for the open container. Um, area is exactly the same description that we use for River Dazzle. And it's primarily designed to include the Garage Bikes and Brews and the Open Container part of that festival. Bacon Bash does not have any open container on Friday and Saturday, it's only open container to provide. Uh, the ability for people to enjoy a cocktail or beer while they're looking at the um. Classic cars that would be on Main Street. Um, and so it's only Sunday, um, Bikes and Brews intends to have some classic cars there, and would like people, they have the opportunity to primarily go walk down Maple Street. To the, to the River Trail to Bikes and Brews. We say to Pine because some people will walk to Division Street to access. Um, Bikes and Brews from the north, rather from the south, but our experience has been, most people come down Maple, cross City Hall Plaza into Bikes and Brews. So, uh, in the past, we've not requested this, but with the success of Bikes and Brews and they want to be part of the, of the car cruise, um, they asked us to. Um, amend our request to be similar to the one that we use for River Dazzle.
How far is the car cruise, from where to where do you have cars that are?
Um, it goes from Luigi's all the way to um. Uh, Tarnation Tavern at, at Maple.
Okay, so it's Maple to Locust Street?
Yes.
So why do you, why are you looking to have it all the way out to Cascade then?
Um, I think it's probably.
For Hill?
Yeah, I, we wouldn't need Cascade.
You could end it at Locust Street?
So you could pull back to Locust, could you bring Pine Street up to Maple?
Yes.
Just make sure traffic funnels down the Maple Street and into here?
Yeah, and we could. We could even drop to Pine, uh, most people walk down Maple, and we could provide signage at Maple that indicates open container route. To Bikes and Brews, so that people follow that pathway.
I think constricting that area from a. Management on the Chambers part and, and the law enforcement piece, I think I'd be more comfortable with that. My, Mr. Bjork, I don't know if you want to make a motion to bring it back to Locust to Maple?
Well, I will afterward, done talking about, because I wanted to ask Officer Young what his thoughts are with it too. You'd probably, I think. Officer Young, you'd like to say no open container probably, but. Um, let's hear your thoughts.
I just want to make sure that juniors had nothing, no involvement with any of the containers leaving?
No, it, we, um, it, it, we close it off at Emma's.
Okay, yeah, that was, that would be my concern if you make it uh where you're proposing, so.
Um, so it's. And I think, I think the reason that we're, I basically asked the city clerk to take the wording that we use for River Dazzle and just put it in for Bacon Bash. The wording for River Dazzle does include juniors.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
All right, and then I think um Alderman Morissette was gonna ask something about like um Lazy River, who's off of Main Street. Now, can you take something out of Lazy River and go up to Main Street, or how does that work?
Well, they could go down River Walk.
Does River Walk?
Yeah.
All the way on there?
The River Walk Trail. Well, maybe that's not Maple Street to Main Street, to City Hall. So we might have to cover both ends of, of Locust. To pick up, uh, is, is uh. Lazy River involved in this?
You know, there's really no official involvement. The, the car, the car cruise has been the closing of Main Street from.
Yeah.
And um. For a couple of years, we did not have open container. Um, but then when open container was provided. For uh some of the Taste Ofs events. I started receiving some pressure from bar owners saying, well, if they can do it for Taste Of, why can't we do it for Bacon Bash? So we talked with Chief Young and we included that for River Falls Days. Um, on the Sunday of, that included the River Falls Days version of Car Cruise. It was incredibly successful, and so people now are interested to be more involved, and so that's, it really has started the conversation of exactly the same as before. Just add Bikes and Brews so people could conveniently walk down the Bikes and Brews.
Okay, so you not, you're not. Sure if Lazy River is, are, are you using cups?
Yep, it's just like River Dazzle, specially labeled cups.
Okay.
Um, it, exactly the same, same system.
So. River Dazzle included Lazy?
Yeah, and, and the reason Lazy isn't in the enclosed area is, in order to keep traffic flow, we keep. That street open so people can get to Family Fresh Market, so we don't close that intersection. From, from east west, only from the north, so.
Yeah.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
So. I've been to the car cruise a couple of times, there are barriers up on both ends to stop traffic, and I haven't really seen a lot of people outside that. Have we had enforcement issues in the past? If we do include juniors, and I would assume that's also Mariachi Loco. Um, that they would have, like, do we have a lot of people leaving that area with open containers? Or is that an enforcement issue?
That's my concern.
Yeah, relative to River Dazzle, the open, the amount of people using River Dazzle. Uh, are you, for Car Cruise Bacon Bash is ten or fifteen percent based on the amount of. Especially marked cups that we sell to the bars that they have to use, it's a much smaller open container event.
So if we left it as is, juniors and mariachi loco could. Choose to participate in the car cruise, whereas if we amend it, they can't. Correct?
Mariachi Loco would not be in that.
They're on Cascade, right?
Yeah, and they're on Cascade, that's right, but the way this is written.
Yeah, it just says Main Street to Cascade.
They have not expressed interest to date to be part of Car Cruise.
Okay, so. But if we left it as is, they could choose to participate, but now we are not seeing issues. With people really leaving those fenced off areas past Emma's.
Because, because there's really.
Nothing.
Reason to do so, the cars are in that, that defined area.
And Chief Young, i- i- I don't want to assume, is that true for your officers in the past that, like at River Dazzle, have they had issues with people leaving their area?
Yeah.
No, there hasn't been an issue.
Okay.
I have one question, um, because you brought it up, so when we say it's successful, I've always wondered, this is a council, what does that mean? Would you want to tell us what you think success is defined as for these events, because it's been brought to us a couple of different times, and we've been. Patient in extending and expanding this a little bit, but I've never really heard a financial dollar or, you know, increased revenue, same store sales, I've just never heard a metric come back.
Yeah, I, and Councilor, I can't, I can't give you metrics, it's mostly anecdotal, but.
Which troubles me.
We, we. Two or three years ago, as the Chamber decided to drop the car cruise from Bacon Bash and. Um, River Falls Days mostly because of a lack of volunteers. Um, we were approached by some of the bar owners who said, if we provided the volunteers, would you bring it back, and we said yes. Uh, and so that solved that problem, we also. Take the closure of city streets seriously, uh, because it does impact people's day-to-day lives. Um, and so if I look up and down the street and we've closed a, a bunch of streets and there's ten or fifteen people. In the street enjoying the cars, for me, that becomes my anecdotal evidence that we have to revisit whether or not. Those types of events like a car cruise could maybe be better held at a parking lot somewhere that would impact. Um, um, residents in their day-to-day travels. After River Falls Days, when I was going home after cleanup, Main Street was. After River Falls Days, when I was going home after cleanup, Main Street was very, very busy. Um, and so, um, during the Car Cruise, as you looked down the street, and so I said to myself, okay, let's see if this continues. If it doesn't, then we'll continue, revisit. I, like you as counselors, you hear from both sides. So there's plenty of downtown businesses that enjoy the Car Cruise on Sunday. There are other businesses that contact me that says it destroys their sales because people can't get to their stores.
Well, so yeah, there's kind of an opportunity cost and and that's why I just think sometimes we kind of go off of anecdotal evidence and I think we've been inclined to support business. But then it becomes, well, what type of business are we supporting and are we indirectly hurting another business? So, uh, you know, I'm fine here, but I think in the future, we should try to get to a little bit more.
And Car Cruise for us is a, for us, the the event is largely over. It's not a moneymaker or or major cost. People show up with their cars, car enthusiasts enjoy walking up on the home street. It's a nice family event, um, but for us, it's not.
No, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, I'll just make a quick comment. You know, I served on the chamber board for several years. The metric for success in the chamber is not just financial. Um, it is about the number of people you bring to town. It's about the the cash registers ringing for the merchants, not necessarily the chamber. So it is hard to create a metric to say whether this is a success or not, other than the anecdotal, looks like there's a good crowd downtown.
And all of the, all of the licensed beverage providers downtown will say that it's, uh, the Car Cruises, the Taste Ofs bring better than average sales. Have those events did not exist.
Yeah.
I would tend to agree with that because what we're discussing is opportunity gained versus opportunity lost at the end of the day.
But I think Nick hit it on the head too, you know. So great the, um, bar owners, tavern owners are getting more business, but what's happening to the thrift shops and the other shops? Are they not getting the business? So, you know, pay Peter to, um, steal from Paul or whatever, so.
So, um, I would feel more comfortable if we amended.
Right.
The boundary, um, and pull in the southern boundary instead of Pine Street. I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we bring it up to Maple Street. And instead of Cascade, we bring it, uh.
Locust.
Up to Locust.
And that would accomplish what we're trying to do tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, as long as the Maple Street includes the ability for people to walk down the River Trail for the remaining distance.
So all of the Main Street, the north part of the intersection, yeah.
Yeah, that's all I was looking at changing was the Main Street part of it, not the Riverwalk area, so.
So let's see if we can put together a coherent motion. So, what?
No, go ahead.
So if I look at the resolution and go to the fourth, whereas the chamber is asking to include another date and location in addition to the original request of Heritage Park, which is Sunday, September twenty-ninth, eleven AM to four PM for Main Street, uh, for Main Street from strike Pine Street and insert Maple Street to strike Cascade Avenue and insert Locust Street.
That's right.
That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, so we got first and second motion. Any questions on the motion?
That works.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay.
We have a great festival coming up for you. I hope you can join us on the twenty-eighth or twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth. Um, great music, lots of bacon, family activities, so we'll see you that weekend.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
And back to the original motion.
Rise motion.
The rise motion.
Rise resolution.
Yeah. The motion is amended.
Back to the motion as amended. Are we okay with that? Okay, uh, any other questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Next, let's see if we can get that done. Next, we have the minister's report. Scott's got anything for us or if anybody has any questions for Scott?
Yeah, I just got one quick one. One of the many opportunities that, uh, community has to contact their their mayor and council members is the upcoming final cookout conversations of the year, September nineteenth, uh, six to seven thirty PM. Uh, Mayor Toland and many of the River Falls City Council members are hosting the last of the cookout conversations of the summer. Uh, free meal, celebration of neighborhood parks, uh, meet new people and get to know your city council. Um, you're welcome to bring, uh, the whole family or a group of friends. Uh, the event is in Hoffman Park at five forty-seven Hanson Drive.
Okay, anybody have anything for Scott? Okay, I just got a couple, uh, good news things I'd like to point out. Um, the city's public works team came together after the recent storms that we had a couple of weeks ago to help clean up fallen trees throughout the city. And they also helped the Greenwood Cemetery Association with their cleanup efforts at the cemetery, which the, uh, association greatly appreciated. Um, as development continues at Man Valley, the walking path is now paved and is open to the public. For anyone looking for a new trail to walk this fall, I encourage you to check out the path at Man Valley while enjoying the beautiful weather. It is very nice out there. Uh, the Glen Park Pool officially closed for the season on Friday, August thirtieth. It was another busy summer at the pool. We had over three hundred and fifty students taking swimming lessons at the pool. And we look forward to next year seeing everybody there. Uh, another one is the congratulations to Bygoff and Roddy, a local law firm, on its fiftieth anniversary, which was celebrated last week. The firm has been a staple of the River Falls community for half a century. Stephen Goff, an attorney and managing partner at the firm, served at the city of River Falls attorney for twenty years and he has been very active in the community the whole time. Let's see, new school resource officer, uh, new school resource officer, Adam Morrow, joined veteran Brian Jensen at the start of the school year. The River Falls Police Department began its school resource officer program with the public district in two thousand and six with one officer covering all the schools. Uh, Adam joined the police department in May of two thousand and twenty. And speaking of school, River Falls School District staff and students are back. Uh, seeing as the kids are our future, let's all make sure to support the staff and parents as they get back into the swing of the school year. So usually I talk about go Pat Co, but now I like to say go Wildcats go.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Okay, thanks, everybody.